The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for our February 15th meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So am I.
Second, Mr. Miles. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Jessie made the motion and Mr. Miles seconded. And it was all in favor. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a request from Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, who applied for approval of a conditional use permit on a tract of land containing approximately 21.446 acres located at 100 Walton Avenue. The property is zoned highway commercial. Steve?
Thank you. This is gonna seem like a redo because it is. You just heard this case just a month or so ago. Let me basically explain what's happening here. Walmart, to play it safe, decided to refile this application as well as one in front of the planning commission. As you know, there's a little odd provision in the zoning ordinance that says we only allow buildings 50,000 square feet in the commercial district, and if you want it being bigger, you need a conditional use permit. Obviously Walmart's been here a long time. I've said this before. They thought with a minor building expansion, going, adding basically the liquor store on the front, to play it safe, we better get the CUP to bring us 100% in compliance, even though they've been there, they're clearly over 50,000 square foot. So we approved this a few months back, couple of months back, to be over 50,000 square foot, but we actually tagged in the exact square footage at 188 and some change for the addition. It was about 5,200 square foot or 5,000 or so. I think it's 5,000 exact, about 5,077. Well, now it's gonna be another 2,000 square foot. It's very, very minor. So I said, I don't really think we need to come back. You've already got an approval to be over 50,000, but their attorney said, but we locked it in at 188. We would feel better if we came back and cleaned it up to make sure there's no question. Let's just file a new application to go up to, and this time we just made the cap 200,000 to give them some wiggle room if this construction project needs another 200 square foot. But there's your revised plan on the screen. And what they're doing is interesting. It's, Project One is the liquor store on the front, which will be a separate box, actually have a separate address. But now there's another component that'll be, don't wanna use their competitor's name, but there's another grocery store in town where you can order your groceries online and swing in there and pick 'em up, pull in. This is gonna be a similar service that now Walmart offers. So that component bumps out the building another couple thousand square feet. So again, it is really, really minor. But again, their attorney thought, or the Walmart attorneys, thought it was important to get this approved specifically for that plan. And as you can see, the condition now is the existing retail business expansion will be limited to a revised total of 200,000. That gives them a little bit of wiggle room in the future if they have to do something else. They also are going back to the planning commission for this expansion too. Because again, they got a site plan amendment for the exact size, and now it's going up another couple thousand feet. So it's really, really minor. You guys got the exhibit in your packet. You've got their condition. The staff report, again, says you guys can add conditions, spells how we look at the findings. And again, the provision that we're referencing is, again, the zoning ordinance, Section 5.73 that says, again, "Commercial uses including retail business and office and wholesaling up to 5,000 square, 50,000, and anything above, you gotta get a CUP." So it's just an odd, kinda odd section, because we have bigger boxes in this community, obviously. But I guess in 2004, when this ordinance was written, there was a cap put on box size on buildings. So there's the need to get a conditional use permit. I can tell you, we're working on a housekeeping amendment for the zoning ordinance, and that's one of the cleanup items we're gonna try to address. That's a little bit of a dated standard to some degree. And it seems kinda silly that we're making folks come back here to get conditional uses and approvals like that when the buildings have been there for several years. But again, their attorney is correct. To play it safe and be 100% in compliance, this is what it required. So there's no staff items of concern. The exhibit's there. I don't know if the Walmart folks made it in. Oh, yep, he's right in the back. Sorry to see ya. And again, be fair, they're coming in from Arkansas, I believe, Memphis?
Memphis.
Memphis. This is several trips back, not only for you guys, but the planning commission. Doing site plan amendments also requires a technical review. So they're making, they've made several trips to Danville just to get these approvals done. I appreciate that. But again, they're here if you have any questions. And they're following the planning commission case, I hope, at the same time that they also need to get another approval to move forward with the construction project. They're already working on some grading, footer, foundation stuff, but we had to sort of stop everything till we get this other kinda approval done.
Does anyone have any questions?
There's not gonna be any changes on ingress or egress or the overall look of the building?
Well, yeah, it's gonna change the overall look because it's gonna be an addition. There's some on the side, too.
You can see on the first, first exhibit behind you, they're harder to see maybe than went out in your packet, but you can kinda see that ingress and egress, the parking will be reduced kinda on the western side because there's gonna be more building, but there's now gonna be pull-in parking instead of dual diagonal parking. But the access points are gonna function the same, and you can kinda see it on the one exhibit up in the middle at the top. You see their travel lanes. And again, there will be a separate address. It's already been assigned technically. There's no building up yet, but that liquor store has to have an exterior separate. The other part of the building will tie into the main building.
That's what I meant, yes. It's gonna tie right into the building.
Yep, so.
And no exceptional ingress and egress for that.
No. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve the conditional use permit for a commercial use exceeding 50,000 square feet in the area of the Highway Commercial Zoning District located at 100 Sam Walton Avenue with the following conditions. The existing retail building expansion will be limited to a revised total of 200,000 square feet.
And that there would be no issue?
The evidence is showing that it's not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare in the zone in which it is proposed. Its use will not contribute toward an unburdening of public infrastructure and/or services. Use will not, does not seem that it will result in increased traffic congestion, additional parking problems, substantial increase in population density, environmental problems or constitute a nuisance, that the use otherwise meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
It doesn't matter. I put down like, it doesn't matter, whoever. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. Thank you. Made this gentleman drive all the way from Tennessee. The second item on our agenda today is from the Bull County Industrial Foundation. There's applied for a variance for a building height on a tract of land containing approximately 40 to 50 acres located at US 127-150 bypass Danville. The property is zoned industrial business development. Steve?
Thank you, guys. So it's like Groundhog Day here. Y'all have seen this one already. And I'll keep it light because we have talked about this, but I do wanna point out a few things. This case was filed on February 22nd. Front page of your staff report, again, you see there's co-applicants on this. The property owner is Cincinnati New Orleans Texas Pacific Railway Company. The co-applicant is the Danville Bull County Economic Development Partnership, Inc. This is a zero address because again, it's a fairly big piece. A property that you see in the bottom map there, you guys have this on page two of your staff report, the folks out in the audience here. Pretty big piece, but actually is a portion of that property. Couple views that were in the packet. And we'll kinda go to that exhibit and leave that up there. That's the one applicants turned in. And basically, let me just summarize real quick. We have a height requirement in our industrial and commercial districts. Again, another standard that's not typical around the state of Kentucky or even across the country is to have height standards in your industrial districts or your commercial, but we do, of 60 feet. The applicants have requested a 90-foot variance of that 60-foot requirement to potentially go up to 150 feet. And as you know, we had a first case out in the industrial park for basically a similar application, if not the same application, same client. That case was approved here at the Board of Adjustments. Right after that, there was another case filed because the client indicated to the EDP folks they were looking at another site here in town, which is this kinda shaded red site along the railroad track to the west. We had Case Two set up for you guys because now there's some discussion on this site. What was tough at the last meeting was we really didn't know what portion of the property. We were north, south, middle, because again, this exhibit is the exhibit that we're using that's owned by the railroad. So kinda at the last minute, we talked and said it'd be nice if we really knew where we were on the property, because what a conditional use permit is, is actually given approval to do something, or I'm sorry, a variance, to give a variance to do something somewhere on a piece of property fairly specifically. And then not sorta knowing if we're on the northern tip, southern tip, in the middle, you know, it's important that we lock down a portion of the property and not lock down the other portion if the goal is some point in the future to plat this off into three or four or five pieces. So what they've come back with is this is gonna be conceptual lot two, which it's hard to see, but it's labeled in the middle of that exhibit. There, I've got my pointer on why I keep pointing at the screen. It's more, it is gonna be conceptual lot two, and I'll let them define that a little better, acreage and whatnot. And then sure enough, there's the railroad spur. And one of the issues that was conveyed was that the client desired rail access. So then there's the spur. And so the question was, were we north or south or up here? Now we sorta know it's more in this general area. Still not completely defined because there hasn't been a plat filed at this point. So again, we're asking, the client's asking for a variance of the 60-foot height requirement, 90-foot. Case looks identical to basically what was in your packet last month, and you see the provision of the zoning ordinance, Article 5.10.4. Again, talks about that maximum height. You guys know in granting variances, you have findings of fact, you guys can attach conditions, all the technical things you're aware of. One thing I will point out is the applicant did submit a different narrative this time. Appears to be a little longer, and I won't go through all that, but it's the italicized text in your packet. And they reference, kinda rehash everything that I'm really saying, plus a lot of extra stuff. And again, we'll let them get up and explain what's changed really from the first application. And then last month, it was withdrawn, so we could kinda clarify this lot issue of this property. But we are still using the same exhibit. There's a zoning map, by the way. Again, it's not digital yet. Will be real soon. That's the northern part, but that's just to show the zoning a little better. And that's an aerial, another aerial that's a little more zoomed in, so you can see the spur a little better. These weren't maybe in your packet, but you can see the spur. You can see a pretty heavy tree line in here, Clark's Run, and so we're more in this portion of the property now. So we've got better definition of where we're gonna be. But again, the formal exhibit that was turned in was this, which is their site selection kind of promotional document that someone can get on and see all the specs about the property. And so we'll work off of that or get on either other exhibit that the applicants or you guys want us to look at. The staff really didn't have any major concerns at this point, because again, we've sort of done this case a couple times. They did offer a condition that you see under staff items of concern, which is the project will comply with all applicable federal, state, and local regulatory standards and permitting requirements for the operation of its business. And again, you guys have the ability to add conditions. Obviously ask questions of me or the applicant, whatever you wanna do. And again, last month, we just sorta kinda had the technicality that we had to pull it. But the first case, again, a lot of this stuff is similar to what we probably talked about the first case. You're looking at the height requirement. You're not seeing a detailed exhibit in your packet, which you're used to seeing, that you just saw in another case. And the reason for that, again, is this is a client, speculative client through the Economic Development Cabinet and our local economic development folks, and at this point, they're not allowed to disclose much about the site, the operation, or even the building footprint. So I understand it's tough for you guys to see a variance application, CUP, whatever, without hard exhibits. You're used to that. But in this case, it's a height variance request with not a lot to look at other than what the applicants have submitted on this exhibit and that written narrative. And at that point, I really need to turn it over to them or their attorney and let you guys get more information, because I'm not adding very much. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys might have of here at the staff initially, or we'll just turn it over to the applicant.
I know that the EPA regulations do not prohibit the release of heavy metals, greenhouse gases, bad smells, other carcinogens, toxins. Are there other regulations that you know of that would prevent all of those things? And you mentioned that it complies with the regulations, but do you know of regulations that would prevent those things?
I'm the zoning guy, unfortunately, so I'm gonna stick to what's in the zoning ordinance. You know, absence of a noise ordinance, for example, in the zoning ordinance, or specifics issues with smell or odor or something of that nature, which our ordinance does not address. Some communities have specific things about that. But it's usually not in the zoning ordinance. They are covered under federal and state regulatory rules. That's kinda where all those things tend to evolve. Those are on the applicant's side of the table, really, in their due diligence. So it's not a planning commission standard that I'm aware of. What we have is a condition that they will comply with those standards, but I'm not an expert in what those standards would be from noise, you know, air quality, water quality stuff, other than what we would do in a typical drainage analysis for a drainage, you know, stormwater.
And one other question, you know, it'd be easier for us to kick the can down the road to planning and zoning, but given that this is already zoned industrial, is there, are there necessarily any hurdles that would prevent, you know, if it turned out to be a smokestack, are there any hurdles of planning and zoning that would prevent that? Or at planning and zoning, will it be more about looking at the site plan for landscaping and things like that?
Well, it's more involved than landscaping. The site plan submittal is big, really. The site plan is a full set of engineer drawings. It's all the construction stuff. It's drainage, which is the big one. Landscaping is just kinda on the edge. It's parking, drainage, landscape, building setbacks, signage, access, travel ways. So the site plan's everything. Most places that don't have height requirements, that's where you go. You do all the site selection kinda quietly, and maybe you have to zone a piece of property. So you have to, at that point, have a hearing like this where we can't say much because we've gotta zone the property today. But normally, when we figure out all the details, is at the site plan approval process. Some communities call those detailed development plans. We call them site development plans. That's where we see everything, and the planning commission has the authority to look at every aspect of that, add conditions, ask questions. But we have engineer drawings at that time. So if, for example, if the drainage looks odd, our public works guys have looked at it and said, that won't work, they need to do this. So we make a lot of tweaks at the site plan level, typically before the planning commission meeting. To get everything right, it has to go through technical review on top of that, and that's why it's that detailed. So at that level, the planning commission will be looking at every footprint of the building, every aspect of whatever's where. In this case, we need to get this additional approval so we can get to the site plan if we ever get there, because there's this height requirement.
If I could jump in right there. The site plan, in addition to everything that Steve has talked about, has kind of a catch-all provision that the planning commission can consider the overall impact on the surrounding area, which is very broad. So that's, gives planning commission a license to really go after some of the things that board might be concerned about.
90% of the time, that's traffic and access, because that's the impact that a big project might make, or drainage. But in this case, if there was another component, obviously, the planning commission has the authority to look at the entire property and make sure it fits the zoning ordinance.
Sounds like you're looking mostly at things on the ground, typically.
Okay. We may have more questions for you later. In fact, I'm sure we will, but.
No, I don't know. I think we wrapped it up for me. No, thank you, guys.
Okay, who's? Yeah.
Good morning to the board. My name is Winfield Frankel. I'm here on behalf of the EDP for this project. And we've actually got a representative from Tennessee as well for the railroad who actually owns the property. But we're here today to request this variance. It's a 90-foot variance to increase the 60-foot limit to 150 feet. We discussed this kind of at length at the January hearing for the variance for the property out deeper in the industrial park. That request was approved, and this project, as we talked about, is a manufacturing facility that requires this variance. It essentially is not a rubber stamp for this project to go forward. This variance, I want everybody to understand, is simply needed. So Danville and Bull County, we're not eliminated from the running for this facility. We're right now being considered, along with some other communities, for this project. And without it, we're gonna be eliminated. But with it, we still stay in the running. Now, we're very excited about the project. As we've said in our packet, it's $100 million capital investment with potential for 275-plus jobs. That's an enormous project for this town. There really, I can't remember anything in my recent memory that would equate to this. It's really a fantastic beneficial thing for Danville. Unfortunately, as Steve kinda touched on, we can't, we're in a position where we can't divulge much information about the project. And that frustrates us, and I know it frustrates this board, but the actual company has requested confidentiality from us. One, because they're considering other communities for it. And two, they don't want to tip off any of their competitors about what their investment strategy's gonna be. So out of respect for them, we can't divulge anything about the project. And that's just simply the situation we find ourselves in. We, you know, it's frustrating, but we're here, we're the Economic Development Partnership, and we, we're really, I guess, asking the Board of Adjustments to trust us that we're not going to be recruiting or seeking out any sort of harmful industry for this town. We live here, we love the town. We're not gonna seek out something that's gonna be harmful for it. As the board well knows, it's governed for zoning variances on KRS 10243. That's, it's the statute that dictates the finding that the board must make. There's four findings that you all need to make in order to pass this. The first one is that the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. And that seems to be kinda the focus of the board at this point, and I think rightfully so. But going back to what I said earlier, this variance is not the last stop on this project. We don't think that granting this variance is going to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. And we say that for a number of reasons. There's going to be, at every stage of this project, regulatory oversight. And I know Dr. Anderson was concerned about that primarily, but as I said, this is not just a rubber stamp to say, all right, we're gonna grant this variance, and this facility is coming to Danville, and nobody's gonna be able to have any sort of checks on it. That's just simply not the case. We've got an enormous amount of federal and state regulations for any, I mean, regulations that are going to remediate any sort of pollution that could potentially come off of a facility. And I hesitate to even go down that path because that's assuming that there is going to be pollution. And as I said, we can't divulge what the project is, and the board really doesn't know that there is in fact gonna be pollution coming off of the facility. This project has actually been vetted by the Transportation Cabinet, Energy and Environment Cabinet, and the Housing Building and Construction Cabinets, and they, none of those entities have raised any sort of red flags. Everybody says this facility would be great for Kentucky. We don't have a problem with it. So that puts the board's mind at ease. And then once it actually gets into construction plans, you know, the regulatory review is going, at the state level and federal level, is gonna happen prior to planning and zoning reviewing this. So all of those, anything about containment, disposal, all of that is going to be vetted by regulatory agency before planning and zoning gets into it. And then planning and zoning has to approve the final site plan. So that affects the first prong that you all need to find. Second one is, will it alter the essential character of the general vicinity? Again, we think it will not. It's an industrial zone. This piece of property is really surrounded by other industrial facilities. Dana, Berry Plastics, that used to be client, there's the Panasonic plant. It's right in the middle of an industrial sector of town. Three, will it cause a hazard or nuisance to the public? That goes back to number one, really. We don't believe that it will. It's going to be a state-of-the-art facility that is going to have very stringent regulatory oversight. And then finally, four, will this allow an unreasonable circumvention of the zoning regulations? We don't think it's unreasonable at all, as Mr. Hunter said a second ago. This 60-foot height requirement is kind of unique around Kentucky, and we really don't think it's unreasonable to extend it, especially because we've got this project on the hook. We're in the running here, and they're very interested in locating the Danvilles. So we don't think it's unreasonable circumvention of the zoning regulations at all. So in summation, we would ask the board to approve this variance as requested, as you all did back in January. It's simply a means to keep Danville in the running. It's not a guarantee that we're gonna be chosen, but it keeps us from being eliminated. And I realize the concerns of the board about any sort of environmental impact that this is gonna have, especially with the issues with the Brown Power Plant and the Corning Facility, the old Corning Facility. But I want the board to keep in mind one thing about those two facilities that have really kinda been in the news recently, is that those are mid-century facilities when they were built. Their construction predates the EPA, and it certainly predates the more stringent regulations that have come into effect since the EPA's creation. So this is not going to be that kind of a mid-century project. This is gonna be a brand-new, modern facility that is going to be completely compliant with all state and federal regulations. And one thing that I can divulge, and I've talked to Mr. Lassiter about this, is that the facility is environmentally conscious. They've actually, they're going to have solar panels installed on the roof. So if that gives any sort of indication of how this company views the environment, they're not just disregarding any sort of environmental concerns. They know that they're out there, and they really want to be a productive member of the community. Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you know what the structure is?
No, I do not, personally.
Does Mr. Lassiter?
We just know the building height.
Do you know what the factory will discharge?
No.
Have you been to a factory of this company elsewhere?
Personally, no, I have not.
So although we trust you and many of the people who have spoken with us, the beliefs that anyone here has are based on not knowing what it is, not knowing what it will discharge, not having seen one like it.
Right. I understand that 100%. I really do, and that's what I was trying to touch on, is that it's, we're asking the board really to trust the EDP, that we're not going to bring anything to this town that's going to be harmful to our town. We live here, we work here, our families are here. We're not gonna do anything that would, that would hurt Danville or hurt Bull County. We just, that's, that's part of our charge to the citizens.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Frankel?
I'm not sure I know where the ingress egress is on this particular parcel.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I don't know if I understand where the ingress egress is on this particular parcel.
The ingress and egress. I don't know that that's really been determined at this point. That's probably gonna come, where we're looking at is really, as Mr. Hunter pointed out, is that mid-70 acres. That's conceptual tract two. There's some roads around it. I think that's really gonna come more once we get to a site plan review, but we don't, we don't have that information right now, because it's, we're at such a preliminary stage that I don't think the company has really even made any sort of movement toward plotting that out right now.
It went through the industrial It would be through the industrial park.
What's that, I'm sorry?
But it would be through the industrial park.
Correct.
It could have multiple entrances.
Right.
But not through residential.
Right. It wouldn't be through residential. Okay, any other questions?
I'm curious, you keep referring back to that we approved this before for the other site selection. I am curious as to why the change. There's, I would have thought they would have known that they needed access to the railway when they presented the other site, so I'm curious about why the change.
Well, and I think they did. One of the issues I think that came up was that they, after considering the other tract of land, they were considering doing an off-site rail access, kind of as, or something closer to the actual railroad itself. After kind of revisiting that issue, they, and saw that this plot of land was actually available, they said, well, hey, why don't we just, why don't we locate the whole project right next to the railway and cut out any sort of logistical issue with getting products to the rail line? And I think that was simply what it is.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jody, do you have anything to add at this time?
No, ma'am.
All right, any other?
Do you have some questions?
Do you have some?
Is the client aware of concerns on that? We got confused on exactly what which of the three parts are.
Right.
Is the client aware of concerns with the very northern, the low part of?
I don't believe so, no. Are they concerned with it? No, I don't think so.
So are we approving the whole piece?
No, I think right now we're just looking for, for the conceptual track two, that mid-70-acre tract.
Not one, not three, only two?
Just two.
And that could be a condition of any motion?
Right. That could, we could end that in that it was limited to that tract.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have several people here. I assume many of you would like to speak. If you want to speak, anyone that wants to speak, please raise your hand, so I have an idea of how many. Okay. Not, not, not too bad, then. All of you are welcome. The lady in the blue. Mike, you want to go first? Go ahead.
Ladies first.
Okay, ladies first. State your name.
Hello. My name is Nancy Davis.
Okay, I need you to raise your right hand. Do you swear to affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just here today, I'm not speaking in opposition to this variance. I am speaking in opposition to approving something when we don't know what it is, but I do commend Jody for attracting the potential of new industry to Danville. I'm excited about it. I've lived here 40 years. I do own 250 acres in this general vicinity. Bringing new industry, I have every reason to be positive about new industry because that's going to make the value of my property increase, and I'm going to get maybe new construction, new jobs here, potential fallout with commercial development. So I just want to be sure, is aware that I'm not speaking here as a competitor because my property's agriculture and commercial, so I'm not looking for industry on my property at the time. However, I am just speaking as a concerned citizen who owns this property because my property is fairly close to this acreage. And definitely, a 150-foot structure, which is like about 14 stories, will be visible from my property. So, and I'm also concerned, as David Anderson spoke about, the air quality, because as I have future development down the road, I do want to be able to have clean air on my property, which I feel like I have now. I do think that the, this is something I spoke with Steve about, the P&amp;Z Director. I do think that the property owners who own property adjacent to the railroad should have been notified, although he told me that the KRS statute does not require those people to be notified because technically they're not adjacent property owners, although the statute does require people across the street to be notified of something. So I think that's something that we can't do anything about today, I don't guess. And I do think, looking at this, had I been working with Jody on this, that a, next time you sign a confidential agreement with someone, put in the agreement that we will have to release certain information if you're going to require a zone change or require a variance, or go back to those guys and say, look, we don't want to release the name of your company, we don't care about that, but we do need to know what the structure is going to be if we're going to approve it. And unless it's just a dead giveaway, you know what it's going to be, perhaps it's a dead giveaway. So I'm, I'm just here to say that if there is something, as Mr. Frankel said, in the statute, you can put limitations on it, even though the KRS statute does say, and I quote, "Before any variance is granted, the Board must find that the granting of a variance will not adversely affect the public health, the safety, or the welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, and not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public." So that's before the variance is granted. So perhaps you can grant the variance, but reiterate that because you're in the dark, as we're operating in the dark today, maybe attach that requirement to it, just as, you know, that you, that you must comply with this statute, which we have to do. But I'm not sure how you could be written up, but maybe you could attach some, something to it, because that's my main concern, is the hazard or nuisance to the public. That's, that's my main concern. I am excited, and I do commend Jody again for trying to work really hard to bring industry to Danville. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Good morning.
Do you swear, state your name?
Mike Paris.
Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Good morning. Thanks for your service. I had the privilege of sitting next to Ms. Johnson for a two-year period of time, and I commend her, she does a wonderful job. These, you're not getting paid big bucks for doing what you're doing.
Don't you want to double our salary?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Two times zero, there you go.
Yeah, two times zero.
This is a unique circumstance in a lot of ways. First and foremost, as you're aware, this, our ordinance with regards to this is quite unique in the state of Kentucky. Secondly, because of the competitive nature, which we find in, in the recruitment of major industries, this, the information that you seek cannot be given. That's the competitive nature of, of the business. My comfort in this comes from several things, and I ask for your consideration on this. First and foremost, our industrial foundation, and I might note for the record that I've not always been a fan of the industrial foundation lock, stock, and barrel, I want that said because, on balance. But I have to give them tremendous credit because they have never brought anything into this community that has been harmful. I know we want to talk about North American Phillips Corning, dah 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 dah. That was long before this group of, long before the industrial foundation, long before the EPA, long before the state of Kentucky, long before this entire environmental awareness, which I'm glad we have. I take comfort in the fact that the state of Kentucky and, and their viewpoint is valuable I take great comfort in what little I know about this company, at least know where they're from. And I take extremely great comfort knowing where they're from, because where they're from, they are more environmentally conscious than we are in this country. And I take a great deal of, of comfort there. I had the pleasure of cornering David at Kroger, and I thank you for your time and, and your ear. And one of the things we talked about is, is out here at the E.W. Brown Plant, about five or six years ago, we all watched this very large vertical structure go up. And I said to David, I said, you acknowledge, you saw that, yes? And I said, David, what do you see coming out the top? And he said, smoke. I said, that's not smoke, that's steam. Because that particular structure diffuses the steam generated by the natural gas burners, which now power most of our electricity. In fact, I just learned a few minutes ago that KU intends to decommission their coal-burning units. So you got to have some way to dissipate the heat and steam. Now, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that's exactly what this is about, because I don't know. But I go back to what I said. The folks that I met with, where they're from, and the fact that they, that they are going to be tremendous corporate citizens, I take great deal of comfort in total. Remember, this is but one step in a lengthy process. There are many points down the road where disclosure, should we even get chosen, where disclosure has to be made, at any point in the process, this community can say, ah, don't like that. Finally, I got to put on my mayor's hat. We struggle mightily at City Hall to provide the level of services that we do. I ran on, on, on the basis of being mayor for economic development because it's about jobs. It's about good jobs. Everything we do here depends on our local economy. If we stay the same, and you all know this, if we stay the same, we're actually falling behind because everybody else is gaining ground. If nobody else is gaining ground, guess what? We've got inflation we have to deal with. And now we've got this pension thing looming over our heads that is projected to cost the city $262,000 a year more for the next 30 years. That's a big number, folks, for us. So I come to you admittedly very passionate about this, for the obvious reasons, but I come to you admittedly very comfortable at this stage that we're on the right track, that the industrial foundation is on the right track, that the people that they're soliciting to come into our community are top shelf. And I ask for you to give it an opportunity. Give it an opportunity for everybody to see it in the light of day. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Yes, ma'am. Would you state your name, please?
Joanne Wingfield.
Joanne Wingfield?
Yes.
And raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I understand that it wasn't required that the neighbors be informed. I think it was morally wrong for us not to have been told, because something's legal doesn't mean it's necessarily right. I represent, along with some others, the 80 households.
Kind of speaking to the mic.
I'm sorry, the 80 households on Saddle Ridge Circle. And while we aren't against what is trying to happen here, we're afraid of it. We're afraid of, and Attorney Frankel said, or implied, that it's an entirely industrial area. It's not. There's a big neighborhood there. There's our 80 homes, and then there's blocks and blocks and blocks of other homes to the, to the east there. We're concerned about the noise, we're concerned about the steam or whatever comes out of the tower. We're just concerned, we're afraid of what might happen there, and we think it's putting you in a very uncomfortable position to okay something because people say it's okay. And you're risking looking foolish, I'm afraid, if they're wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I saw a couple more hands. Who else? State your name.
Jim Porter.
And raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm the statement you're about to make or true and correct?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I've been following the progress of this primarily through the articles that have appeared in the newspaper. And while I do have some concerns, which have pretty much been expressed and summarized by the previous folks, I would, like I said, I'm not anti-industry. I retired from, my job was Square D Schneider Electric after almost 40 years, so I know of industry, I know about structures, and I know about possibility of pollution and all these things. So I think I'm rather clear-eyed about this. One question that I might have, Danville had a 50-foot height maximum?
Sixty.
60-foot? Wonder what the reason for that was? There must have been a reason. And I would like to see us not be so quickly, so cavaliers disregard this. Thinking back to Russian Prime Minister Gorbachev, he had a saying, "Trust but verify." And while I do trust our mayor and our economic development corporation, I really, really wish that, perhaps not me as a citizen or the rest of our citizens here, but you folks as members of the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments, I wish you knew more about this project. I understand, you know, the requirements for non-disclosure and all of that, but nevertheless, it appears to me that, as a previous person said, we risk the, we could look rather foolish years on down the road here. So I wish we knew more about what it is we're approving. And with that, I'll, I'll close. Those are my thoughts and statements.
Thank you. Steve, do you have a?
Did you want to ask a question else? So, two things first. I notice I never get sworn in, so that gives me a lot of flexibility here to sort of ramble sometimes. You might want to swear me in someday. I don't know how you do this.
Okay, Steve.
Hey, I'm good.
He's joking, okay.
Yeah.
I thought you were serious.
Stick to the facts here, but this is a little bit speculation. Let me address the notice requirement real quick first. And again, it's been brought up twice, and it's fair, very fair. The statute requires us to notify adjacent property owners. Adjacent means you touch the property. Unfortunately, that railroad track that runs north and south is a property owner. Some folks think it's a right-of-way. Like streets, it is not. It's privately owned, it's always been that way. A lot of confusion over my years on what's the right-of-way, is that a road, are we across the, because you, it's, you know, it's narrow. Statute says adjacent property owners, but we go across roads and right-of-ways, that's adjacent, but unfortunately, that's private. So we did not notice, send letters to the 80-some folks or everyone it touches. That whole red area, we would have had to go all the way up. It's on the applicant to turn in the adjacent property owners list, that's the requirement. We just send the letters. Now, I will point out, it's always been interesting, in my experience, 20-some years, that folks, and not picking on them, but they'll come and say, Steve, I didn't get a letter, but they show up at the hearing somehow. So the notice, that's why we put sign, or we don't do signs of emergency, that's why we put ad in the paper, and you do the letters. But to be fair, this is something that's always bothered me, because of that scenario, and there's other situations where, we used to call them hate strips back in the day. There'll be a weird piece of platted property, or a developer will come in knowing there's an issue, he's got a zone change, so they'll, they'll just plaid off a strip of 50-foot, come in, and then they're the adjacent property or to their own project. Or they'll buy a property. I've seen this happen, and then the neighbors are frustrated because they don't get a letter. What I'd like to do in the zoning ordinance amendment, and I've thought about this for several years, is to put a better standard, because we're not, we're not, we can make ourselves more strict in that, that area as far as notice goes, and not everyone sees the paper, unfortunately. What I'd like to do maybe in the amendment, and we'll talk about this, is maybe we'll set a standard that's adjacent or 1,000-foot, whatever catches the greater number. I've always thought that I, that we want to notify, that's the whole goal, is get folks at the hearing, lots of them. And this is what happens, unfortunately, when you have these goofy strips where we don't catch that next property over. And it would be nice if our notice requirement went 1,000, but you got to be careful, because if you set it at 1,000 feet and it's a big piece of property, then it turns out it is just the adjacent. So I'd like to figure something out, so in the future, we're always catching neighborhoods that are next to a piece of property where they didn't get the letters. That's just housekeeping there.
We need to make it clear, though, that you are following state regulations.
We are, but we are, but we as a planning commission through the zoning are allowed to go stricter. And, and I think we should, because this has always been a problem, I think, all, all over the state. Going back to the ordinance, let me talk about the Going back to the ordinance, let me talk about the height requirement real quick. And again, I am speculating here, but when I first got here and looked at our ordinance from day one and saw the cover, I knew we must have hired a consultant in 2004 to draft the new Danville Bowl County zoning ordinance. And then, as I've getting used to the terms, NCC, N-C-R-A-B-C, ICD, ICB, not typically what we see in Kentucky, you know, days of the R1s, I1s, R2s, R3s. It's normally what you see. It was clear to me that in 2004, we wrote a new ordinance with a consultant, and there's a lot of techniques and terms and processes and standards that let me know that some land use planner, similar to a guy like me, came in and wrote a brand-new, cool ordinance for Danville. It had all the techniques at that time and place in 2004 that we were all looking at around the state, around the country, because planners are somewhat biased on certain things. I'm a planner, but there was a time and place where no one wanted Walmarts in their towns. No one wanted big factories. And so in 2004, by the way, where I worked before, we wrote a new zoning ordinance, and we hired a consultant out of Austin, Texas, Duncan and Associates, very, very top-notch firm. I have a very trendy town, and they tried to push all these techniques on to us. "You guys ought to really think about building caps, because you sure don't want to get another Walmart near town." We said, "We're cool with Walmarts, and we hope Sam's comes to town." The town, we just didn't feel we wanted to restrict the town, but we were asked to put in building caps, building heights, different kind of landscape standards, different interconnectivity, different pedestrian connections and parking lots, and some of those things might work great in Gainesville, Florida, or Austin, but they just weren't ready where we were. So we resisted that urge to put all those things in our ordinance, because we thought we might get factories that are taller than 60-foot, and we know retail is taller than 60-foot. And because at that time, our ordinance allowed multifamily and commercial, we knew we had 20-story buildings, we had, you know, apartment buildings that were way taller than 60-foot. We also have a standard in the book right now, it's 35-foot in residential, well, most three-story apartment buildings with the gables, 42-foot. We've got height standards all over the book, in GRA, GRB, NCC, HC, that just don't work for how you build apartments, how you do retail, how you do industrial in modern times. And if your town is interested in growing in all those areas, it seems rather restrictive to me that we have these height requirements, as well as these building caps, and several other techniques that I've seen in the book that clearly need to be thought about and either kept or put aside for the future. That's why I think they're in there, because a consultant came in and put every technique at that time in play into our book for building heights. And again, I can tell you specifically, the one we just heard on the 50,000-square-foot cap, that was offered up, because at that time, planners just didn't want big boxes. You wanted to resist the urge for the lows, the targets, when everything was going super Krogers. Most towns said, "We don't want those things, because they're either unsightly, or it's just not the look." So you forced them to break them up into multiple boxes, is what you do. Or they put breezeways and get around the rules, or whatever. But a lot of towns just said, "We're not going to go down that road." Looks like we put everything in our book, and that's why we have the need to do all these variances. Now, as a planner, one thing I've done over the years, if I see something that we do variances on repetitively, over and over and over, and I'll give you an example. In my prior job, it was obvious that rear setbacks didn't work. We were latched on to 30-foot from back in the day, for some reason, probably because you needed to make sure we had septic tank width. And people now use their backyards differently. We kept doing variance after variance after variance for rear setbacks. We thought, "Why are we having it 30-foot? 10 seems to work. We let a detached building be at 5, but if it's attached, it's got to be 30." What, we just looked up, "Let's make it 10." Did it 10 years ago, and it worked fine. All the variances quit. Money dried up. But at the end of the day, we realized, we've granted so many rear setback variances for residential, that something must be wrong in our book. So I guess I'm just used to revising the book every single year. And I talked to my counterparts yesterday, my former job, and they've got a housekeeping amendment again this year. So every year, we would change the book based on real-world conditions, and we would track variances specifically and say, "Wow, there must be a problem if we've got to grant that many variances. We want people to be able to use their yards. Let's make them 10-foot." So that's my experience. I'm new, but that's how I look at these things and evaluate the ordinance. So I'm not that hung up on the 60-foot. And it is in my housekeeping. I've got post-its all over my book of things I want to try to address. I'm looking at the whole ordinance as a project, and the 60-foot requirement, the 35-foot requirement in multifamily, the 50,000-square-foot cap, all those are things I would like to see revised. But ultimately, it'd have to go through the planning commission, then to the governments, before it ever happened. So until then, that's our standard, and there's a need for variance. So, thank you, guys.
Was there anyone else here who wanted to speak? I thought I saw more hands earlier. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for anyone before we ask for a motion? Or comments that you want to make from the board?
Just one. We have been discussing smokestacks. And no one has ever said that this thing is going to be-
A smokestack.
A smokestack. And we brought in, Mr. Mayor brings in the generating plant about their environmental... What he didn't mention was the fact that they are polluting our water supply, and it could ruin it. There are other things besides what comes out of a smokestack. So what is this company going to produce? Does it have things such as what comes out of the generating plant that has everything, even down to things that is not on a periodic chart? So what are we getting into when we approve this? Is it going to kill the ground that they're putting it on? Is it going to be, pollute the air? Nobody's, well, everybody's saying it's not going to pollute the air. How about the ground? How about all the other things that can happen with the manufacturing process? Go to Detroit, since we're bringing up this stuff. Go to Detroit. Look at what was left after the automotive people left. If you hadn't been, it's a trip worth taking.
Mike, apparently you have a comment you want to make. You're already sworn.
Well, I think, in fairness, a rebuttal is warranted, because I did talk to Mr. Purdy. Mr. Purdy and I go back a few years. But this is not about KU. This is not about an ash pond. This is not about water quality. This is not even about whether it is or isn't a smokestack. That came up out of conversation from the Board of Adjustments. And the word pollution here comes out of nowhere. So this is about voting on a variance. And this is about neighbors who trust each other. I was born and raised here. I've been here 60 years. I'm not going to let anything come in this community. If I can do anything about it, that's going to be adverse to us. So with all due respect, let's stay focused on what the issue is. It's a variance on antiquated ordinance. Thank you.
David, I thought I saw you about to speak also.
Yeah, I don't care the order.
Well, no, you can go ahead, Dr. Anderson.
Okay. Well, I would say, I'm an economist, and so jobs are a big part of what I'm about, and I would commend Mr. Lassiter, and the mayor, and John, and other people in this room for succeeding with that. We are at an 18-year low for unemployment right now. We have lots and lots of job openings, lots and lots of opportunities, very, very low unemployment rates. So we're not in a desperate state in that regard. And 90% of our jobs are not in manufacturing. They are in jobs that require, most of them require us to draw people here. They require people to want to come to our beautiful little town, restaurants, hotels, tourism, education, healthcare, banks. And we've got a good thing going. And we have to be very careful, because none of us know what this is. None of us know what's going to come out of it. None of us know what the structure is. And so we're really rolling the dice, when what is at risk is a very good thing to begin with. So I think we should use caution.
Dr. Miles?
If I could just make one more comment, kind of toward what Dr. Anderson was just saying, and I want to echo what Mr. Porter said, that we need to trust but verify this project. And that's exactly what we're asking the Board of Adjustments to do today, is allow this variance, to allow Danville to keep, to stay on as a consideration for this project. It's not that, like I said earlier, that this variance being granted means that they're ready to go break the ground out there today. There's going to be an enormous amount of oversight and review on this project before anything even gets started. And that's all banking on the fact that this company is actually going to choose Danville. We're just asking the Board of Adjustments today, not to approve the construction of a factory out there, but to approve the variance so that Danville doesn't get eliminated. That is simply what we are asking today. Thank you.
Mr. Frankel? Mr. Frankel, while you're up, I have one housekeeping matter. Did you say there were railroad representatives here today?
Yes.
Would you mind standing up and just saying that you agree with everything that's been presented here?
I do.
We probably get-
Could we get your name?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to put you on display.
My name is Jake Ware. I'm the Industrial Development Manager for Norfolk Southern, responsible for Kentucky and Tennessee.
Let's get you sworn in. Do you swear in a firm statement you're about to make, are true and correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am. Everything that's been presented is our understanding of this project as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? You know, I think, I've sat pretty quiet, but I really think that we do have to consider exactly what Mr. Frankel said. This is just a variance to allow them to consider Danville as their final location. And I would trust that our Planning and Zoning Board itself, when it come to site review, would definitely put a lot of time and effort into making sure that they complied with all, or that this plant, whatever it might be, complied with all regulations. And EPA is different than it was years ago. They're going to put a lot of time and effort into making sure that everything is like it's supposed to be. Having said that, I wish we knew more. I really wish we knew more, because I do, I don't like to vote sometimes on something that I don't know more, and we just have to use our best judgment. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We have a statutory requirement under state law that is not met here, so I make a motion to deny, because the findings of the fact do not prove that this will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. We've seen no evidence that it will not affect the essential character of the general vicinity. We have seen no evidence that it will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public. And so by state law, our statutory requirement is to deny.
Do I hear a second? Okay. All in favor of denial? Motion fails. Do I hear a motion to approve? Don't everybody speak at once.
I make the motion to approve the request for a 90-foot variance for building height in the IBD zoning district at zero, Highway 127, 150 bypass, with the addition of conditions of approval that the project will comply with all applicable federal, state, and local regulatory standards and permitting required for the operation of the business.
Can I have discussion?
Let me get a second first. Do I hear a second? Linda seconds. Okay, discussion?
Given that the regulation, I'm sure they'll comply with regulations, given that the regulations do not prevent the release of carcinogens, heavy metals, pollutants, I'm certain of that, how would you feel about, would it be a friendly amendment to include a condition that it can't be, it can't discharge harmful pollutants? Or that it not be a smokestack, or both?
The question about the smokestack, I would not accept. The first point, that the facility would not emit harmful pollutants, it seems to my mind, is covered in the statement of the condition of approval that would apply with federal and state regulatory standards.
I mean, have you been to Ashland? Have you been to Gary, Indiana? Have you been to where they refine our oil, Baton Rouge, Louisiana? Clearly, the environmental regulations, even the newest under our current president, do not prevent the release of carcinogens or other harmful pollutants, or bad smells, or bad noises, or, I mean, I think, we're all aware of that. Given that the regulations don't prevent dangers, would we like to include that?
Understanding more completely the sense of your friendly amendment, I will decline.
So you don't want anything, you want it left just as you stated?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Would you be agreeable to a condition that your variance is confined to tract two? I think that's what we discussed.
Yes, yes.
Is the applicant okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other? Okay, no other discussion. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passed. You have your variance.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
I would be voting yes, too, so if you want to include that. There was two against, and the rest of us for four. Okay? All right, thank you. We have, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.